Good afternoon, the Committee on Water and Land is on its agenda for Monday, March 14th, and we are in room 229, and it's 1:00 P.M. Just a short housekeeping announcements, we're convening the Committee on Water and Land here, and this hearing is being streamed live online. We will be taking testimonies from folks who are in person and online as well. In the event we are cut off due to technical difficulties, we'll have to abruptly end this hearing and reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at the end of our agenda on Wednesday, March 16th, starting at 1:00 P.M. Members will proceed with the first item, which is HB 1631, House Draft 1. This creates a non-refundable water catchment income tax credit for homeowners who install a water catchment system needing certain requirements on residential property in the state owned by the homeowners. Tax Department, or who do we have for tax?
Yes, this is Teresa Zewick on behalf of the Department of Taxation.
Okay, proceed, welcome.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Committee. The Department of Taxation would like to stand on their written testimony, but also make note that the Department believes a grant program would probably be more effective and appropriate to facilitate the intent of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And members, if you have any questions, please stop me and ask. Be happy to have you ask them as well. DLNR, Seaworm, Kaleo, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Aloha, Kaleo.
Hello, I'm Deputy with the Water Commission, also here with Neil Fuji of our staff. We stand on our written testimony in support, offering minor comments and are here for questions. Thank you.
You know, Kaleo, why don't you, with the comments, yeah, that's important for the Committee. We'd like to hear.
Okay, so I think we just recognize that water conservation opportunities are really important for us to collectively work on, especially here on Oahu. I may provide some data there. We also talk about some of the existing water conservation plans and programs that are already here and are being used throughout the state. A lot of them are operated or administered at the county level, mostly by the county departments of water supply. The last comment we highlight is that the amount of the refundable tax credit may not necessarily incentivize the use or the construction of these catchment systems. And we provide some basic data on 1,000 gallon plastic tank can cost anywhere between $2,000 to $3,000, and that doesn't include all the other costs that going to, you know, setting it up, installing it, et cetera. So we're not sure if the intent is for this to be an incentive, whether or not the tax credit as drafted would be sufficient to incentivize that. And that's the extent of our comments. And I don't know if Neil has anything else to add from my staff.
Okay, he's shaking his head. Members, any questions? Senator Misa Lucha?
I have a question. I'm just curious whether in your estimation, Kaleo, you have a figure in mind that might incentivize our homeowners to, considering that that amount, it is a pittance compared to what they really are spending.
Yeah, thank you Senator for that question. I think, I don't have an exact amount, and I'm not an expert on tax, these tax credit approaches and what's the best management practice in terms of like percentage of total costs, et cetera. But something, you know, closer to like halving the price obviously would incentivize people to do it. So something upwards of that amount. But again, I don't know what's standard practice, and I don't want to put a number out there that...
I understand, I understand.
Thank you.
Maybe I can answer that, Kaleo. I do have a water catchment up at our volcano home, which is not fully a resident. It's just a summer home. And including the filters and, you know, all those backups that you need to add to the water tank, it can go up to even between 3,000 and 5,000. And I think now too, I'm not sure if, and maybe you folks know, I understand, is it through, not EPA, but is it, I think there's some qualifications now on the kinds of water tank that is kind of like current, that can be used or should be used, and not the old fashioned style?
Yeah, thanks Senator. I'll hand this off to Neil to talk about specifics about, and it's really around the regulation of rain catchment systems.
Right, right.
For drinking purposes, so he'll probably provide more context.
Yeah.
And you know what, too? If it's for non-portable use too, like for agriculture backyard use and not using portable, I think that's a great idea. But anyway, can be costly. Neil, thank you. Go ahead.
No, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. Neil Fuji with the Water Commission. Yeah, so regarding, you know, drinking water and catchment, there's really no state regulation, yeah? So the Department of Health will regulate like drinking water system serving, you know, so many persons or so many connections over a period of time over the year. But the recommendation for these types of catchments, there's a good guideline by the UH College of Tropical Sitar that has a guideline, they update it every few years, but has good best practices and recommendations on how to build your catchment. So, you know, the last I looked, you could have wooden tang, you could have plastic, but they also recommend disinfection if it's portable water, right? So there's stuff that can get in, you know, your roof, you have bird droppings and things. So there's some cautionary and guidelines to that for drinking water. For sure, you want to, you know, disinfect it either, you know, several filtering or you could use other types of disinfection. Now, for a non-portable use, obviously, you know, you don't have to do that. And the last thing I'll say is, if the intent is to like incentivize folks on, already on drinking water systems, like municipal or other privately owned systems to do catchment, that's one thing, but folks that are not on catchment, they're going to do it anyway. So I don't know if that would necessarily be an incentive. So anyway, I hope that answers, thank you.
Thanks Neil. Tom Yamachika, are you there, Tom? You sent testimony.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Jade McMillan from TACSA Foundation of Hawaii on behalf of Tom Yamachika. We've offered written comments on the measure, will stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have testimonies, members, comments from Department of Budget and Finance and the Board of Water Supply, Kathleen Mitchell as well. Let's move on then to HB 1656, and this is relating to trails. This appropriates monies for the establishment of a permanent, permanent, full-time equivalent land and access specialist position and a permanent full-time equivalent abstractor position within the Nala Heli Program for the protection and expansion of public trail access statewide. DLNR, David, or I saw Bill Storm on there as well. David Smith?
Yeah, David Smith Administrator with the Division of Forest and Wildlife. Will stand on our written testimony in support. We really appreciate support on this, and this would help a lot with adding capacity in our Forest and Outdoor Recreation Program. Bill Storm is also here to answer questions, and after a year of working on it, we're, Bill's going to start on a permanent basis as the manager for that program, starting on Wednesday. So congratulations to him, and thank you for all your support for the program.
Okay, thank you, Bill. You want to add anything from our Big Island since you're on? Aloha, good to see you.
With Dave on our written testimony, and again, appreciate the support very much, and happy to answer any questions if you or the Committee members have any.
Well, you know, I have a question. It seems like, you know, when we heard, I believe the Senate's version as well, and up until now, including your testimony, I think we talked more about having appropriations that has to do with maintenance, which seems like, you know, a very, actually not troublesome, but throughout our state, I think we've heard comments that I think we need to make sure that we have enough resources, you know, to continue to keep up with the maintenance, and just to hear from you.
Yeah, maintenance is a major issue for us. I can let Bill talk about it some too also, but we have very little funding in our LNR 804 budget for all of our Forest and Outdoor Recreation Programs. So it is, there's definitely a funding constraint there. But one of the other things is we have a constraint with capacity for doing all the compliance and whatnot. So a lot of our maintenance right now is constrained by the fact that most of our money for maintenance comes from a federal grant, and we haven't been able to do all that compliance. So this professional position in the bill will allow us to do a lot of that compliance, and also to help out the branches with a lot of their procurement and working through some of those other issues that become difficult for them as they try to deal with day-to-day issues. So it will definitely enhance and streamline the ability to do maintenance. We did have a request in our Governor's Budget that currently isn't on the HD1, but we're looking for some additional funding support in LNR 804 as well. But these positions, both of these positions here, will do a lot to help move maintenance forward in the program statewide.
Can you explain what's an equivalent abstractor position is? What the person does? I'm curious.
Yeah, the abstractor does a lot of research on state-owned trail and access routes. So if somebody's going to develop a piece of property, we'd like to be able to get more ahead of it. Right now, we're just in reaction phase. So, you know, when a developer comes in and says, hey, I want to do a subdivision, people send it to us for comments, and then we have to do a bunch of research to see if there's any ancient trails or access routes in that area if anything's going to be altered or cut off. And so doing, that's the abstractor work is, you know, doing all, you know, a lot of, these are old documents that are written in Hawaiian. The person has to be fluent in Hawaiian, they have to do all kinds of research with archives. And so, you know, it's a super important thing because it's preserved a lot of access for the public. But what we'd really like to do is be able to get in front of it, and so that we're not so reactive, and we actually have an inventory that people could look at. And that's what this position, I mean, we could have this one position in, that's being proposed here, could spend all their time just on Hawaii Island. There's so much work to do, and so it would serve the state widely, but Hawaii Island would benefit greatly by having, you know, a position like this to help preserve public access, so things just don't get, you know, lost in the fog of time.
Yeah, now that you brought up the Big Island, isn't the Big Island's trail system the longest? Anyway, I think it goes completely around the island or identified. I don't know if there's connections, Bill?
Well, yes, the Ala Kai Trail, of course, goes from Pololu all the way through around, down the west side of the island, around South Point, all the way to Kalapana. There's that, and many of those segments are within the Nala Heli system. And there are laterals that go off of those as well. And the other islands have similar types of trails. So it, as Dave mentioned, it's an extremely important aspect of the work the program does. We currently have one full-time abstractor, so we are looking at doubling the capacity to be able to do that work.
Dave, do we have one abstractor on all islands?
No, we have one abstractor for the whole state.
Oh, my, oh, okay. And just to add, I've read recently on the east side, actually the Big Island with the development, Bill, I don't know if you kept up with the King's Court now, the golf course now is going into deleting one of the nine holes. And I understand that the council is doing several amendments. And then I think, I believe, reading yesterday's, when I got home to read the old papers of the week, that they've negotiated to make sure that there were, I think, something that has to do with the trail system at Waikoloa. So that's encouraging.
Yes, indeed, indeed.
Yeah, okay.
Aloha, David. So in the testimony for DLNR, there was mentioned it was made of $2 million, a one-time appropriation for some extensive, for extensive backlog of deferred maintenance of trails and other forests. So just to clarify, so was that part of the Governor's Budget? Or is that like a, are you asking it from this sort, from a supplemental? Or can you just clarify that? And again, the other question that I would like to ask in addition to that is, moving forward, I want to kind of pin you down a little bit about what Senator Inouye was alluding to earlier about moving forward, there needs to be maintenance. And what can we expect from you in the forthcoming years? Have you made any determination as to how much in operational maintenance budget would you require?
Yeah, that 2 million was kind of a placeholder. The Chairman thought that it was important to put it in there in case there is money that became available in this session, because it looked like there might be some chunks of funding that might be available. We have a huge deferred maintenance backlog, and so that's what that was in there for. We did have a Governor's Request of 700,000, so we have a $300,000 shortfall in personnel. And we only have, you know, statewide for all of our Forest and Outdoor Recreation Program, which includes hiking and hunting, hiking and all the excess, you know, equestrian and mountain bikes and everything else. We only have $100,000 statewide. And so we're actually in the hole right now. So we had a $400,000 request for operating and a $300,000 request to make up the personnel shortfall. Currently in HD1 is the 300,000, which is great, we thank you very much. So we'd at least, you know, bring that close to being, even in terms of our personnel budget. But we still only have $100,000 statewide for all hunting and hiking from the state side. And so we're, we have to depend on a federal grant, which is really problematic. It really isn't designed to do maintenance, and so it's really clunky. That's one of the reasons this position could help out a lot. It would help us out with compliance. But what we really, our target, what we're thinking of for recurring funding is about 1.2 million dollars a year. And so we've gone in with that four, and we're hoping to come back several times and get that beefed out. But, you know, to have some money that the programs could use to actually go out and have the flexibility of general funds and not have a lot of the constraints that we have with the federal funds would be really where we're trying to go with the program in the long run. And so I understand we got to get there stepwise and whatnot. But there's, there's both deferred maintenance, there's capacity issues, and then there's just a pure funding, you know, shortfall on the state side for funding. So we're just trying to work through that as time goes on. We've got good funding and support for a lot of our programs. 804 is kind of lagged behind over the years, and we're just trying to play catch-up now.
So just so again, to be clear, so the $2 million is a placeholder. When are you going to be able to come back with some specific numbers then? Because I think as we move forward, we're going to need that.
Oh, I believe Bill could answer better, but I believe we have, all of that's based on projects we have that are ready to go.
Yeah, we have, each of the branches on each of the islands has a very robust list of the trails and the roads that we maintain for public use, those that are within the Nala Heli system, and also beyond that that are on forest reserve land and other lands, public charged lands that we manage. So each of the islands has a list of what needs to be done, what's been done, and when it has been done most recently, but our staff shortages are severe. The operating funds, as Dave mentioned, are very short. The federal money that we do get has restrictions on it and a lot of compliance issues to manage as well. So I don't have any specific numbers at the moment, we'd be happy to put that together, but that's what we would be looking at trying to do. And again, as Dave mentioned, we, we had $400,000 in the administration budget. That's now not there anymore in House Draft 1. The hope was to move into the next biennium with additional 400s in each year to get to the point where we're at 1.2 million on a recurring basis for funding for the Outdoor Recreation Program and the Nala Heli Trails. So that's where we are.
So Bill, just to clarify, further clarify. So if we fund this particular position, this would allow you to help with a compliance, which would then enable you to seek or get the federal grants, which had been curtailed in the past because of compliance issues? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, it would make it, how do I best put this? It would allow us to utilize more of the federal funding to do the routine maintenance that we need to do. The other aspect of the federal money is that it's reimbursable. So we need to spend the money ahead of time, and then we have to front the money out of general funds somehow or another, and then get it reimbursed from the federal government. And the mechanics of that can be challenging. So having the state money available to us in G-funds to utilize, to cover the costs of all that maintenance work, and then have the reimbursement come later, makes it a lot simpler for us. And we can leverage that state money a little further with more, with other sources of funding to try to beef up the management money that we have.
Okay, that's good to know, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks. We also have communications from Department of Budget and Finance with comments from Craig Hury, testifying for Hawaii HDA in support, John D. Freeze, Kauai Visitors Bureau sends communication in support, Susan Kanoho, as well as support from individuals Kathy Gogel and Beth Anderson. We will proceed then with HB 2016, and this is relating to the Sand Island State Recreation Area. And this appropriates monies to the Department of Land and Natural Resources to prepare a master plan for the Sand Island State Recreation Area. And members, there's big support for this, lots of testimonies. DLNR, Kurt Cottrell.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. Kurt Cottrell Administrator for the Division of State Parks. And we stand on our written testimony in support and are eager to hear what the other supporters would like to say as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Let's see, he hasn't shown up. He did indicate he would be in person, but it is Ty Tamagawa from the Pillars LLC there and Zoomland. Anyway, there's a great testimony letter from him regarding this measure. We do have communications from Budget and Finance, Craig Hury with comments. And we do have support from many folks, and I assume that they use the area a lot and also work in the region. All-in support, Raiden Letour, Rena Abihai, Joni Wong, Dave D., Camille Calmoro, Ray J., Valentina, Elmer Bolivol, Kevin Augustine, Pastor Rob Gross, Jeffrey Mabute, Al Santos, Derek Bagbayo-san, Bobby Coloma, Jackie Corita, James Westbrook, Aaron Larson, Scott Kobayashi, Michael Ballassi, Jimmy Simé, Angeline Shields, Keith Tamagawa, Josiah Bijor, Lynn Tamagawa, Brendan Kekehio, Christine Kimura, Chase Nanad, Courtney Tanaka, Brandon Gross, Jazz Miranda, Andrew Romandia, Daphne Pohaku, Christopher Ramos, Jason Tiempo, Julian Aponte, Shira Kaz, Daniel Peters, Dale Fortner, Evan Salazar, Quinton Toaiava, Louis Salazar, Exton Duran, Denzel Johnson, S. Austin Florino, Sofia Maldonado, and we do have Matsumi Stratton and Sophia Stratton. Members, they're all interested in this measure. So any questions from DLNR? Otherwise, let's, yes, sure, Senator, please, here.
Thank you, Chair. Hi Kurt, how are you today?
Hey Senator, good, thank you.
Aloha. Hey, I don't think I saw in the testimony, I'm not sure, how much money is required for the study? How much time is needed? And what might be some of the outcomes that are kind of being bandied about?
Well, you know, that's a great question. I think the appropriation is blank. We still got to kind of put our pencils together and figure out what, a normal planning operation with a consultant would range anywhere from 500 to like $800,000. There is so much that can be done with Sand Island, and as you can see from the interest, there is going to be a lot of community discussion, which will make having a pretty good consultant critical, because I suppose we'll have a lot of ideas and discussion. Over the years, State Parks has been approached by a multitude of people with ideas about Sand Island, ranging from soccer stadiums to concert venue to luau venue. As you may know, we have baseball and softball fields there. We also have canoe paddlers there, we have a remote control vehicle park. We have camping after we fix all the sewer problems. We're shut down right now because our sewer system is antiquated. That's undergoing capital improvements right now. It's really a diamond in the rough. Its original plan in the 70s was to make it a water skiing park, and that particular form of recreation has kind of come and gone. And there is just huge community interest, particularly the urban core that that park services. And I know that the introducer's idea, and I think it's a good one, is to reinvest in it with a lot of community input. The visitor industry has a whole bunch of our other parks that they use, that they have access to. And because of this one's location at the base of Kalahii, it's got this huge urban residential patronage that is unrealized because it's just in such poor shape and underutilized. So one of the things happening now is we do have capital funds from previous session. We're fixing the sewer pipes and the sewage system because we have violations. We're also going to start cleaning the shoreline because it has a lot of World War II detritus from years and years ago. And, you know, the shoreline itself needs to be improved and made safer. One of the things that excites us at State Parks is it's also like just a few inches above the ocean. And so any, any design and community discussion on the future has to factor in sea level rise, you know, over the next 20, 30, 40 years. So that's why we've been reticent to like invest in heavy infrastructure like the soccer stadiums or concert venues or the luau, because we know that that park is already subject to the damage from king tides. So it's getting eaten away a little bit. But we really want to just see what the community would like us to do. I think canoe paddling venue is going to be a big one because of its, its location right next to really good water. You know, the channel between Mokoea Island and Sand Island is pretty clean. So whatever we do besides the land base has to have a, an ocean access component, you know, built into it. Did that not answer your question?
So $800,000 in two years?
Say that again?
You did well with the, some of the vision and the potential. But 800,000, two years, give or take?
I think, yeah, I think that's a placeholder for coming up with a, you know, going out to bid for planning.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a plan right now that you worked out of? Or it's just having positions go in and do what parks do, make, enhance the parks? Do you have a plan?
Well, for Sand Island, like I mentioned, we have an antiquated plan. Well, for Sand Island, like I mentioned, we have an antiquated plan, you know, that was produced in the 70s.
So perhaps maybe what we should do as well is include with the position, come up with a master plan. And I think you probably get a lot of community input from that as well. Because this measure is, is only appropriating the monies, the resources for the positions, I believe. It is a master plan.
Master plan.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is. Sorry, sorry.
Better than going. I'll take positions if you want to.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Senator Refier, I mean, Senator Favela, please.
Yeah, so, you know, I guess the idea was good back in the 70s. When we got all the families that was living there called home and then they decided to relocate those families out of the area. My family have a problem because you talk of lack of usage. The reason why that park is lack of usage is not safe. You know, and I know that a certain group of people took over that park. I'm not going to mention their name because I don't want to stereotype them, but they took it over. So the people that used to go there, like my family, every year camp two, three times a year. They don't go because they're not safe in the bathrooms. Our kids, especially our young ladies, are not safe in the bathrooms because men is sleeping in the bathrooms. So before we come up with a concept of this beautiful plan that everybody wants, the main thing that I think that you guys need to do even right now or yesterday is emphasize the safety. I understand you guys are doing upgrading the sewers. But since that park, since the 70s, it only went downhill with safety wise. That was a very, very important part of our life growing up in the 70s. Surfing and utilizing that water in that area. But like I said, the reason why you guys have a down incline is you guys need to address the safety issue. Because we're going to give you guys 500 to 800,000 dollars. That's only going to be a bandaid what Sand Island really needs. They need way more money than that. You know that and I know that. This is only going to be starting to cost. The rundown and the bust up of that park is going to be more than just the king tides. Is the infrastructure inside. And all of the abuse of what these groups do when they're there and the park closes and they're there overnight, weeks at a time. So what we got to really work on, guys, and I'll tell you now, you know, and I know, we need enforcement. If we're not going to have enforcement, there's no way the state should invest any kind of money into that park. Into people can start being safe in their restrooms, safe to have the cars parked, safe to start using that park to camp over again. All of those things should be incorporated before we start giving any more money going forward unless you can address the safety issue. That's the reason why my family and I do not go there anymore as a tradition thing, three times a year because of the safety issue. And we witnessed very, very violent of them beating each other up in the park. And HPD would take hours to come because it's so far out there. By the time they come, they're gone already. So unless you can make the public feel safe, you're not going to have that utilizing over there. Everybody wants this money because they're thinking you guys are going to fix it up to make it safe. We kind of keep it safe now. 500 to 800,000, that's just a bandaid on what's at park. That park needs more money. You know why? Because it is a diamond in the rough. It's one of the most beautiful parks, camping, picnic, family area. You probably the whole island. But we need to invest safety. People can feel safe and utilize the park. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Kurt, do we have security there every day?
No. Not enough. Senator Favela is absolutely correct. And I'm assuming in the planning process from the community folks, that is going to be one of the leading issues. We have a park caretaker that lives on site with his family. You know, he opens and closes the gates and then supervises the crew that comes out to do maintenance. But as you guys all know, on the side, around the corner from where the camp facilities are and the comfort stations, we have an entrenched homeless community that has, we sweep them out and then they return. We also have invasive longthorn kiavi that also needs to be taken out of there. And it's kind of a double whammy. That kiavi provides kind of shade and habitat for the homeless community. So you take out one, you can kind of reduce the other. But yeah, at night, even the campers that we have, when we, when we had it open for camping, the senators, right? It's, it's the Wild West. And what we really need is, you know, permanent deal in our law enforcement stationed at that park. One thing that will help absent law enforcement, which we need at all of our state parks statewide. I think if we can revitalize the use with more community use, it's kind of a way of, of pushing out the undesirable use. But it is chicken or egg. People won't come if we make a shiny new park unless we can assure that at nighttime it doesn't revert to that kind of bad activity. It is a, it's an aggressive part of town at nighttime down there. I agree.
Kurt, is the sewage treatment plant under the state? Or are you connected to the city and counties Hono Uli Uli sewage treatment plant?
That's a whole nother operation that is a deterrent for development. They are under an EPA consent decree in the sewage treatment plant. They have years of work that they're doing and they have easements across the middle of Sand Island for their outfall pipes. And they're busy doing all kinds of, of construction to upgrade the sewage treatment plant out there. So that's a county, but they, they do cross the Sand Island State Park land.
Well, you did mention in earlier that, I guess, part of the maintenance is including. So do we have to do our own infrastructure on our property then?
Yeah, yeah.
For the connections?
What's, yes, we tie into that facility. But as Senator Favela said, everything's been so rundown. Our irrigation system is pow. That's why there's no more grass. We got to replace the entire irrigation system.
Okay.
But right now, we're replacing just the sewer systems for the various comfort stations. Because we actually had pipes breaking and raw sewage coming up out of the ground. So that's why it's closed. All the comfort stations are closed while we fix that.
Okay, Senator Miss Alucha has a question or comments?
Yeah. Just Kurt, so I am in favor, in support of this, the intent of this, this measure. But I'm a little worried that when we come up with a master plan, we don't have the resources to actually fund it. Because when you look at Kauai Nui Marsh and Haiku Valley, both of those places apparently have had master plans that were developed. And yet, at the end of the day, there was no funding. So what makes this sure, certain that that may not be the course of, of the future for this particular place?
Senator, that, you just hit upon one of the biggest challenges behind me in my office. I have shelves of master plans that were done decades ago. And one of the faults of how government works is we spend a lot of money on consultants in design. And the design reaches a capital threshold that never gets funded. And what I'm hoping, the next bill, which is a good segue, next bill will help us with that. With our ceiling increase, we will have greater access to the operational funds to, to try to pick up on about $40 million of deferred maintenance that we haven't, you know, dealt with, with getting either capital funds or maybe start implementing elements of master plans with a greater source of revenue from our, our park entry and parking fees that we raise. So, but you're right. And when I get involved in this planning measure, now that I've been around the block a few times, one of my main goals is to ensure that it's a realistic plan that is affordable or that will get the funding. The only plan I've seen us instantly work on was Hyena, where as soon as the ink dried on that master plan, we, we, we moved money around and under the proclamation, we were able to implement the, both the, the design and the construction of elements for Hyena after the flood. Lickety split, right? And that's, that's the only plan I've seen. Once we finish it, we immediately implement it, right? So that is something we often be conscious of when we start putting big price tags on planning and development projects.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Then, having said that, let's continue the discussion on HB 2446. My computer just went out. Okay, relating to DLNR resources and this appropriates monies to the department to establish positions in parks administration and operation to implement visitor reservation systems in the Hawaii State Parks. Okay, continued discussions, Kurt.
Great, thank you. Well, I was hoping there would be the same list of people testifying in favor of this. But no, this is a very important bill. We really appreciate the attention that we're getting now that we have raised the fees. We will, by the end of this fiscal year, have about 12 million of new revenue. And while not all parks will be essentially eligible for reservation systems, we've done a good analysis of which ones coming forward, we're going to be able to add, you know, reservation systems too. But more importantly, the 28 positions, which this was not in the admin budget, it didn't make the cut. These are critical positions of which 13 of them are those park technician positions, of which we have two at Hyena. And one of the things we do, which addresses kind of Senator Favela's issue, is we open up parks and we mow the lawns and we take out the rubbish and we clean the bathrooms. And then we go away. And, you know, the park has to fend for itself. And we've identified if we can start placing these park techs that both support maintenance, but also interface with the public in terms of information or explaining rules and regulations, but also have direct access to dog care. So if they observe things happening in the park, they can immediately, you know, contact law enforcement. I can't speak highly enough as to why this bill is important. And one thing to consider is depending on how tourism rebounds, we've rebounded way faster than we thought. And the Asian market hasn't even popped open yet. The revenue we're generating is primarily from the American visitor. And we're very confident we're going to hit that 12 million in revenue by the end of this fiscal year. And we do have a plan, a very robust spending plan to refocus and reapply this new money into the deferred maintenance. We need new vehicles. We need new equipment. We need to enhance our comfort station pumping contracts because patronage is greater than what a lot of these facilities were designed for. We have so many targeted improvements that are not CIP threshold. They're not those big, big, give us millions of dollar ones. These are the, the improvements that are in the 200 to 300,000 range at various parking. It's improving all the picnic pavilions and like say, Ma'la Kehana and improving the campsites. So that is where we're going to reapply and refocus this, this increase in our revenue. And at the same time, we, I, it's hard for me to imagine saying this. We, we could probably decrease a little bit of our general fund operations money that you give us because we can reapply and reinvest our revenue. What we do need though is a stable base for our positions in general funds. Because what I did fund operations money that you give us because we can reapply and reinvest our revenue. What we do need though is a stable base for our positions in general funds. Because what I did learn, like the hotel industry and the airline industry and the tourism industry, when we stopped making revenue, when we closed, we couldn't make payroll. So it's really critical to balance out the state park portfolio to have our positions all general funded and a core amount of money to cover our utilities. But then with the revenue we're generating, we can reinvest the revenue into the operations that we would normally be asking you guys general funds for.
Well, you know, there are some parks and soon to see the parks that will be improved. You can also open up some areas where you already have some concessions in some of our parks. And I think that would also add to having somebody there all the time during the day.
That is very true. Yeah. Car break-ins have reduced since we started parking and entry concessions at the parks with our contracted vendors.
Oh, that's important.
Yeah, then the car break-ins drop because you have a.
Absolutely, absolutely. Whenever you have bodies around there all the time, you'll see that as well. And every, you know, have those, those truck, the food trucks.
Yep. You're getting ready to do a whole mobile food concession.
Absolutely. We do have support from HDA, John D. Freeze, Craig Krye, Budget and Finance, his normal comments. We do have support from the Historic Waimea Theater and Culture and Art Center, Thomas Nezoo, as well as Kauai Visitors Bureau, Susan Kanohu, who does well for her island and always support the statewide visitor program, as well as the Maui Hotel and Lodging Association, Lisa Poulsen. I think that would be it. Thanks, Kurt. We certainly got our added knowledge to how we work on our parts going forward as well. Members, let's continue on then with our, let's see, submerged lands measures. So SCR3, and this is authorizing the amendment of a term non-exclusive easement covering a portion of state submerged lands at Waifu Pe, Honolulu Oahu for the existing seawall and for use, repair and maintenance of the existing improvements constructed thereon. Let's see, Kaylin, who's speaking for DLNR or Russell?
Myself, Chair. I'm Callum Yehara, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Land Division. The department stands in support of its written testimony. The department would also like to note to the committee that we're requesting amendments to the resolution's title, the first whereas, second whereas, and the be it resolved provisions as stated at the end of our testimony. And the staff is present to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Kaylin. And I assume the support also is true for Barry and Ian as well and Russell. Okay, members, any questions on SCR3? Otherwise, this is our annual submerged lands measures that the department continues to make sure that they're on top of these agreements. SCR4 is authorizing the issuance of a term non-exclusive easement. This one covers a portion of state submerged lands at Kaha Luu Ko'ola Poko Oahu for the existing seawall, steps and filled land and for use, repair and maintenance of the existing improvements constructed thereon.
Yes, Chair.
Okay, Kaylin, are you continuing on this one as well?
Yes, yes, Chair. Department stands in support of its written testimony and staff is present to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. As well with SCR5, this one here authorizes the issuance of a term non-exclusive easement covering a portion of, are we correct? We're on same, yes, SCR5. This one covers a portion of state submerged lands at Kane Ohi Ko'ola Poko Oahu for the existing pier, house, rock wall and landscape areas and for use, repair and maintenance of the existing improvements constructed thereon. Okay, Ellen?
Yes, Chair. The department stands in support of its written testimony and staff is present to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Members, SCR64. This is requesting DLNR to support and authorize the Napili Beach Public Access Stair Project. Kaylin, is Kevin going to take this one or you're continuing?
I believe Kevin will.
Oh, hi, Kevin. Mahalo.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair, Committee Members, Kevin Moore, Land Division. So yeah, we'll stand on our written testimony and support, but offering an amendment, which is basically an alternate proposed SD1 of this reso.
Okay.
And that's basically to have it recite and, and resolve that with the findings that we need to get this easement approved and processed by the AGs. And we're available for questions. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, and I can't remember, Kevin, did we have a Senate version of this measure?
No, this, this resolution, I think, was introduced by the applicant itself. And they may have only gone through and gotten the Senate version.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, this is the Senate version, but okay, we didn't have a bill just as resolution, yeah?
There's no bill, yeah.
Okay, all right. Oh, um you have some amendments to it as well. Uh I assume that uh the support from Russell, Kaylin, Ian uh and Daniel are now is are all uh similarly?
Right, they're just they're just here for backup.
Okay, uh yes. Uh let's see, the Napili Bay and Beach Foundation, Pet Linguids, uh sends um communication in support. Members, any questions on SCR sixty four? Okay, hearing none then. Um this one here, this measure uh for the agenda items uh today. Um members, I think uh we can continue on. I T, I won't go into recess. We'll be able to um have discussions here uh on our decision making um as well. So uh let's see, Senator Favela, are you on Zoom land?
No.
Okay, all right. So let's proceed then uh with HB sixteen thirty one. And this is the water catchment uh bill uh re- relating to water conservation. Um my recommendation is that we uh pass this measure. Um I will perfect the effective date uh to July first, twenty twenty two. Um and the text credit shall apply for taxable years beginning after December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Any discussions on this measure? Okay, uh then otherwise, Senator Missalucha for the votes, Chair votes aye.
Members, we are voting on HB sixteen thirty one, HD one. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Vice Chair Agarun is excused. Senator Missalucha votes aye. Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela is excused. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Um regarding the second item, HB sixteen fifty six, House Draft One uh relating to trails. Uh Chair would like to add that um well, we'll perfect the date, the effective date to July first, twenty twenty two. Uh and I'd like your discussion. Let's discuss on this one because I really believe we need some appropriation for the maintenance. And um let's plan on doing a blank appropriation uh to this measure as this will be moving on to ways and needs. Um and because of that, my recommendation was to delete one of the positions, but I think having heard the discussions uh that we um that we retain the two positions and we'll insert a blank appropriation section for a one-time appropriation uh in the operating funds to address trail maintenance and management. And I I think that's needed as well as adopting technical and non-substantive amendments uh to this measure. Any further discussions? Get hearing on, uh Senator Missalucha for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Members, we are voting on HB sixteen fifty six, HD one. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Agarun is excused. Senator Missalucha votes aye. Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Resurrection.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. HB twenty sixteen, House Draft One, and this is relating to the Sand Island State Recreation Area. Uh we've had good discussions on this measure. Uh Chair would like to uh recommend that we pass it with amendments. Uh let's perfect the effective date to July first, twenty twenty two and will adopt technical and non-substantive amendments. Any discussion?
You're leaving the um the money's blank to be determined later?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, uh thank you. Um Senator Missalucha, Chair votes aye.
For HB two zero one six, HD one, Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. For the remaining members, are there any reservations? Any opposition? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Uh HB two four four six, House Draft Two, and this is relating to DLNR uh resources. Uh Chair's recommendation uh that we uh pass with the amendments, just perfecting the effective date to July first uh twenty twenty two uh as well in this measure. And it's uh it is blanked. Thank you. Uh any discussion? Uh Chair votes aye.
Chair, um members, we are um considering HB two four four six, HD two. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. For the remaining members, are there any reservations? Any nays?
Excuse me, you know what? Is this the one that there's DLNR um is asking for the two thousand dollars, I mean, two million dollars?
No, that was
No, not this one. Oh, okay, all right.
We addressed that.
Okay, yeah, all right. And uh it's adopted.
Okay, so um Chair, Chair votes aye. For the remaining members, are there any reservations? Any oppositions? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, uh SCR three, and this is the submerged lands um as well. Chair's recommendation is that uh we pass with amendments, which will be to adopt technical and non-substantive amendments. Uh Chair's uh Senator Missalucha for the vote, Chair votes aye.
This is, members, we are considering SCR three. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Agarun is excused. For the remaining members, are there any reservations? Any opposition? Chair, hearing none, your recommendations adopted.
Uh thank you. SCR five, and this is um the authorization for the submerged lands.
Four.
Oh, four. Okay, sorry. We did three earlier?
Yes.
Okay, um SCR four, and this is the submerged lands uh at Kahalu'u and Ko'ala Poko on Oahu. Uh Chair's recommendation is we pass with amendments, which is to adopt technical and non-substantive amendments. Uh you know, uh one second. Uh DLNR, are you still on, Kurt? Which is the one he says that I remember them saying they have a recommendation?
I think it's the sixty four.
So we did, we did address that. Making the amendments from DLNR. That was four? Or the one we're on now?
They have the draft on the last one. They have a draft with a lot of amendments.
Yeah, this is this is the last one. Oh, so we are on four now.
Okay.
And then five and then sixty four is the last one.
Okay, you know what, though? Uh only for the technical amendments, they did say that they have a recommendation on that we didn't have. Uh let's see. Excuse me, we better catch it now while we can. It's SCR five.
Chair, Chair for me?
Sixty four.
Yes, but then SCR five is the one they were asking you adopt.
Oh, okay, so we haven't reached here yet. It's on five. Okay, then we have to, excuse me, I need that because it's not on this. Okay, all right. Okay, have we concluded SCR four?
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
We haven't voted.
Land Division wanted to make a comment.
Okay, hi, um Russell. Uh the amendments was for SCR five, yeah?
For uh, I believe we had amendments specifically for the first one. I think that was SCR three. And then sixty four was the last one, right? The first item was first resident.
SCR five, I have your amendments, correct? And you're saying you had uh recommendations for three? Or four?
On number three, I believe we, this is the one that we're amending the title and and the text in SCR three.
Okay.
And uh SCR sixty four, we had uh several amendments. We submitted a draft uh
We don't have a sixty four.
No, there is.
Well, then
The very last.
Yeah, yeah, we got that one.
Yeah.
Okay, but you're saying you have one for SCR three?
Uh yeah, the very first item uh for the results, SCR three. Uh it's it's in the text of the submittal. Um I'm 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 sorry, our testimony.
Sure.
The sixty four, we attached uh attached
I got it.
To show the changes.
We got, we got that one. Um SMI, I just wanted because he did say there is an SCR three with amendments, but we only made amendments adopting technical. Okay, it's okay. This is, all right, that's fine. Okay, uh let's proceed then with, I need this one. Oh. Okay. But he, okay, well, hold on. Just we'll we'll get to Russell. Okay, all right. Did we take a vote on SCR four?
Not yet, Chair.
All right, okay, SCR four then will pass this with amendments, uh adopting technical and non-substantive amendments.
Okay, members.
Chair goes aye.
Members, we are voting on SCR four. And the Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Uh Senator Agarun is excused for the remaining members and Senator Favela is also excused. For the remaining members, are there any reservations? Any opposition? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, uh moving on to SCR five, and this is uh another submerged state submerged lands at Kaneohe Ko'ala Poko. Uh and Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting the technical and non-substantive amendments. Okay, any discussions? Hearing none, um Senator Missalucha for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Members, we are voting on SCR five. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. With the exception, okay, of Senator Agarun. For the remaining members, are there any reservations?
Senator Favela, we're on uh SCR five.
Yes.
Okay.
For the remaining members, are there any reservations or opposition? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, uh SCR sixty four, and this is the uh uh support in authorizing the Napili Beach Public Access Stair Project. Uh Chair recommends that we pass with amendments to include adopting uh DLNR's uh proposed SD one um in their testimony as well. Uh do we have any technicals on this one? None, okay. Uh any discussions on SCR sixty four? Hearing none, um Chair votes aye.
Members, we are voting on SCR sixty four. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. With the exception of Senator Agarun, who's excused. For the remaining members, are there any opposition? Any reservations? Chair, hearing none, your your recommendations adopted.
Okay, um members, um before we conclude, uh we will be having hearings on Wednesday and Thursday. Let's see, Wednesday and Friday are regular hearings. We will be holding uh some joints on uh Thursday as well. Uh and we will go into our first GMs for the board hearing on Friday, half of the board. So we thank you for your presence and this concludes then the Committee on Water and Land on its Monday agenda.